And I'm going to call the zoning Board of Adjustment for May 9th, June 9th, 2020. Do order. This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment. This is the June 20, June 9th, 2020 zoning board meeting. As Chair of the Zoning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governors Kanunu as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governors Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governors Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are video conferencing using WebEx through the city's IT department. This is electronic meeting. All members of the zoning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen into this meeting through dialing the following number, (978) 990-5298, and using the password Public access to this meeting is also provided via WebEx, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website, https://www.nashuanh.gov/318/ctv on Nashua's Community Link. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. We are also providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings and where applicable, notice to abutters. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website at www.nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. Additionally, a link to the public WebEx access for this meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website, www.nashuanh.gov. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call (603) 821-2049, and they will help you connect. Attending the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present the applicant's case, followed by questions by the Board. We will allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Normally, the Board utilizes a light timer, which will not be available. However, the Board and all participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes, excuse me, a 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if you are unable to use WebEx. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations were submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote access viewing. Real-time public comment can be addressed via video to the Board utilizing the WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. Real-time comments via audio will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Board utilizing the WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. The public is also encouraged to submit their comments via email to the Planning Department email, planning@nashuanh.gov, or by mail. Please make sure to include your name, address, and comments. Letters should be addressed to the Planning Department, PO Box 2019, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03061. Please note that all votes are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Zoning Board meetings will be held electronically until it has been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The zoning board, the Planning Department, and city staff thanks you for your understanding and patience during this difficult time. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Mrs. McKay will introduce staff as well as other ZBA members. Mrs. McKay, our designated Chair, to read case number one on the agenda into the record at this time. Mrs. McKay will ask each applicant, representative, or individual required to be at the meeting to state their name and address, and if there is anyone in the room with them during the presentation. Excuse me. Okay, I'm going to take the roll. Hi, Steve. Steve Lionell.
Hi, this is Steve Lionell, and there's nobody in the room with me.
JP Boucher. JP, can you unmute yourself, please?
This is JP Boucher, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Thank you. Jack Courier.
This is Jack Courier, there's nobody in the room with me.
Mr. Shaw.
This is Rob Shaw, there's nobody in the room with me.
Mr. Mankara.
This is Jay Mankara, and there is nobody here with me.
Ms. Boras.
Good evening. It's Stathia Boras, there's no one.
Mr. Knackus.
This is Nick Knackus, there is no one in the room with me.
Thank you, and this is Mary Ellen McKay, and there's no one in the room with me. I have two dogs and family members, but they're upstairs, and hopefully they stay there. Okay, let's, staff, oops, Mr. Falk.
Carter Falk, I'm here by myself.
Ms. Poyer.
I'm mute, Kate.
Yay!
My apologies, this is Kate. I am currently alone, my boyfriend will be home soon, I've asked him to stay away, and the cat goes where she pleases.
We will proceed with reading the first case into the record. I think I've gotten everybody. Okay. Paul D.
Yeah? You should probably tell everybody who's going to be voting on this case.
Oh, yeah, why would I? Okay, and I thought of it when I was taking the roll, and then it flew out of my brain. Okay, we have five regular members, and we have three alternates. All of us are present tonight. In this first case, and generally, the regular members will always vote. If there's a conflict, if they feel there's a conflict of interest, they will recuse themselves, and an alternate will be appointed to vote in their stead. The regular members are Mr. Steve Lionell, Mr. JP Boucher, Mr. Rob Shaw, Mr. Jack Courier, who is also our clerk, and Mr. Lionell is also our Vice Chair, and myself as the Chair. Mr. Knackus, Ms. Boras, and Mr. Mankara are our alternates. So our regular members will be voting. Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Now, case number one, Paul D. and, God, I hope I don't kill it too bad, her name, Desuba... Excuse me?
No, it said Coroma.
Oh. Oh, Paul D. and Desuba Coroma. Owners, 26 Canal Street, Sheet 42, Lot 74, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Cable 15-1, Number 15, to maintain an existing dwelling unit on first floor. One commercial unit and three residential units already existing. This is the LB Zone in Ward 3. Is there someone here to present this case?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paul Coroma. Address is 26 Canal Street, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Mr. Coroma, the floor is yours.
Yes, as I have stated in my address, I am currently living at the unit that is already in existence. When I bought this building way back in 2001, myself, my wife, whom went had divorced, I have been awarded this property by the court, and I have a problem in one of the units, which is the reason why I filed this variance petition. And they, way back in 2012 or so, I was asked to vacate a tenant who was living in the unit by the city stating that the unit was illegal. And I did vacate the tenants, and all of the appliances that were supposed to make an apartment livable were disconnected. Now, after I started having trouble with my ex, I had court orders, restraining orders, I had nowhere to go, and I had to find myself finding an arboard in this unit. And occasionally, I would come here, you know, just to escape attention at home, and the City of Nashua, the enforcement officers had known about this for some time, but they knew I was having some trouble, and they had asked me to file for variance application. By the time, I wasn't sure how this was going to go with the divorce. Finally, when we divorced and I got the property, I didn't have anywhere to go. I have a lot of challenges financially, and I am now forced by the city enforcement officers, who wants to enforce the laws of the state and the city, for me to vacate the apartment until I can get it legal. And I had no choice but to file this variance application. And I understand that the current law states that the property has to have a certain percentage of footage, of square footage, before it can be allowed to have another unit added onto it, in my own case. And I do not, I don't think my building meets that requirement. And I'm filing this variance strictly out of a hardship condition, knowing that this building, this unit has been in existence, it is not, it was not constructed by me, and I bought this property like that, and I am really going through financial hardship right now to, just to survive, to meet my child support, legal expenses, and just to get by on a day-to-day basis, so I will not be able to afford right now to move into another apartment or unit after being asked by the city officials for me to move out. And according to the structure of this apartment, while it is a one-bedroom unit, it does not infringe in any neighbor's plot's land. I do have parking that I'm renting from a neighbor. I don't seem to be interfering with any parking, you know, I don't have any parking violations per se that I am, I would be having an obstruction in the neighborhood in terms of an additional parking space. But since this is an existence building, and I am a unit in this property, and I happen to be occupying this property right now, I am requesting, you know, this Board that I'll be considered, you know, this unit be approved in this basis, you know, as a hardship on my side, and that I can follow the guidelines, whatever it takes to make this, the unit legal, and work with enforcement, whatever is required from the City Council or the Engineering Department for me to make this apartment, this unit legal. And I'm willing to follow any guidelines that you guys have for me, and if you need further question or clarification on this matter, I am now open for questions. You guys.
Mr. Coroma, does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Courier.
The question I have is, it's unclear to me what the current parking situation is. It looks like there might be some parking on the left of the house on Canal Street, or maybe a lot of parking, and maybe some behind the house, but I'm not sure. I was wondering if Mr. Coroma could inform me what the, how many off-street parking spaces are with this property.
Thank you, sir, for that question. And this property, unfortunately, I don't have any, I would say, developed parking base on my lot right now. However, I'm renting parking spaces from a neighbor. I'm renting from her right now, I have about six parking spaces, and she just added one that makes it seven parking spaces for me, which I've been renting for, I'll say, for the past several years. And this is where my tenants are parking, and I'm also parking my car over at her parking lot. And she actually lives on a three-crossed street, which is the same side of the street where my unit is on. So we have sufficient parking space for the tenants and myself. And I also am looking forward down the road when the finances improve, to also petition the city, because at the back of the property, I believe there is a possibility for me to create an additional one or two parking spaces there when I have the funds to do so. But obviously, it's going to take money, because I will have to mess with CIPAB and, you know, all of the guidelines that you guys have. I know it's an expensive project, which I'm not really to undertake right now, but currently, I already have parking that I'm using, and all my tenants have secured parking as well, off-street parking.
Okay, so that was, you said you have seven off-street parking spaces that you rent nearby?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you for that answer.
Does anyone else have any questions at this time? Kate, do you see any, because I don't see any hands up, but I wondered if there was any coming in from the phone.
No, Madam Chair, and I have not received any phone calls.
Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to ask if there is anyone else here who is in support of this application and wishes to speak. Seeing none, I'm going to ask if there is anyone with questions, concerns, or in opposition to this application. Mr. Falk.
Madam Chair, I believe the Board was given an email from Donald Bouja. He lives next door at 24 Canal Street, in opposition.
Yes, I have two emails from, are they both from this, no, they're from the same person, I guess.
I think I sent you one, and Kate may have sent you one, but it's the same one.
Okay, I got it. I just wondered if anybody was present physically to speak before I read the email. And I don't see any, I don't know if you have anything, Kate. Okay, then, the Board did receive an email, and I will read that into the record. Hello, Kate, I am Donald Bouja, the owner of 24 Canal Street, which abuts 26 Canal Street, owned by Paul Coroma, who is seeking a variance from the ZBOA to legalize another apartment in his building. I object to any variance concerning this property, since it does not have sufficient parking. Tenants residing at 26 Canal Street frequently trespass on my property to park and unload their vehicles. This disturbs me and my tenants. Tenants residing at 26 Canal Street have been rude and vulgar when asked to leave when they trespass. More apartments at 26 Canal Street will create more parking problems for this neighborhood, lowering property values. In the event you are not the proper contact person in this matter, please forward to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Thank you. And that is the email that all of the Board received. Do you, Mr. Coroma, you have five minutes to respond to Mr. Bouja's email. Do you have any comments?
Indeed, Mr. Bouja is my next-door neighbor, and we do have kind of a big flood, bad-blood history way back in the past. I used to rent parking spaces from him, and we had an comfortable exchange, and my tenants didn't act well. And, you know, he acted very rudely to me, and I kind of challenged him, why would I buy property like this for parking, and I had to follow his rules, and otherwise, I would not have parking. So I chose to find a neighbor who apparently has sufficient parking for me, and her name is Celeste W., and she was actually supposed to be at the meeting today because she's the one I'm renting the parking for. My tenants that I have in the building, I have proof that they have sufficient parking. However, his property, and the space that he has that is adjacent to my property is kind of an open space wherein even drivers off the road might come in and turn around, go into the gas station, opposite gas station, and buy gas. And they find that kind of a convenient way for them to just enter a parking space, to turn around to buy gas. My tenants may have done so occasionally, if they want to turn around, they go into his parking space, but they do not use his parking space. And I have proved to show that my tenants have sufficient parking, and my building obviously doesn't have parking, and him and myself have not gotten along very well over the years, and I can understand why he will have this objection, but to say that this is going to create an impediment or bring down the value of the property sitting in the neighborhood is just not true, because, like, you know, this building is grandfathered already. I'm paying a number of taxes every year, and when I bought this building, I had this challenge to find parking, and I virtually succeeded with that challenge. And now that I have legal parking for my tenants that is off-street, I think that his objection has no real basis, because if my tenants, perhaps, happen to drive in or turn into his parking lot to turn around, they're not the only one who do so when a lot is empty beside a main road. Other drivers do the same thing, and this will not reasonably drop that value of a property. And I think his objection has no real credible basis in this regard, because my hardship is for real, and I can provide this Board with other information, at least agreement even, that will satisfy the party need that apparently is addressing. So I think that has no real basis in this objection in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Coroma.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and, oops, Mr. Falk.
Madam Chair, I know there was one letter in opposition, I don't think Mr. Bouja is here, so.
Is, yeah.
He was the only one that spoke or wrote in opposition, so I don't think there's, I don't think he's here now, I don't think he's one of the call-in users.
No, I don't see that name on, at that point, we just have his email, and we'll let it stand as it is.
Right.
Thank you. So again, we will close the public hearing, open the public meeting, and so everyone is clear. While we have five members who are voting, we have eight members who will be taking part in the deliberation, will be asking questions, and will take part in this meeting. Thank you. Does anyone have any comments they would like to make at this point? Mr. Mankara. No comments.
No, I think I was just doing this, but I mean, I guess I'll just say, you know, I definitely struggle with this one. I think where I come down, though, is that the neighborhood itself is very mixed, there's a variety of different building types, densities, many of these have little to no parking. On the whole, I think it's an existing, it is an existing unit, and it appears that it was not created by the applicant, it's been there for quite some time, but for the use, as a residential use, I don't know what other use you would put for it. So while I do struggle with it, I come down on supporting the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Sorry, it took me a moment to unmute. I think I'm, you know, somewhat also struggling with this, maybe somewhat like Mr. Mankara. You know, I think one thing, just, you know, maybe just as a general comment, we appreciate perhaps the financial hardship that Mr. Coroma has, but I think, want to note that that's not something that we can use as part of what our deliberation or judgment is. So while we might, you know, feel, for the applicant in that regard, it's not something we can consider. I think the fact that this unit has been in existence, and it's only a single-bedroom unit, makes it more reasonable. Like Mr. Mankara said, there is a lot of kind of the high-density, limited parking in this area, the fact that Mr. Coroma's secured parking for these units is definitely, I think, an important factor. But I'd still like to hear the rest of my colleagues' comments, but I think I'm leaning towards supporting, but it's with some struggles still, just because of the density issue more than anything.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Lionell.
Well, like Mr. Shaw and Mr. Mankara, I'm struggling with it, partly the density, and the, if Mr. Coroma says that he has secured off-street parking, well, that resolves one. One if two. I'm not really happy about it, but I think I would probably be inclined to support it, unless convinced otherwise, given that, as the others have said, that it's a small apartment that's been there for a long time, was there when Mr. Caroma bought the building. And there is some history there. I don't think it would make things any worse to legalize that apartment. So, now, that's where I am.
Okay, um, Mr. Knakis.
I think I largely agree with what Mr. said so far. Had this been a unit installed by the current owner, I may come out differently on this, but it's been existent since before he owned the property. It seems like he's solved the parking issue, so I think I can get behind this one.
Ms. Boras. Kate, is Estafia still here?
I'm not seeing her on the list.
I don't see her either.
See if I have any emails. Send me a picture.
I don't see her.
No. Okay, I will move on. Mr. Boucher.
I'm going to support the application. Again, I'm just going to repeat again what's been said already, and which I agree with it. You know, there is an existing... This has been existing for a good time. Yeah, the density is much more than what we would see, but again, the area has some, I think, has a few, you know, it's the type of area where I would... I could see some of that density issue there because of some pre-existing properties. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that Mr. Caroma has been there for a while. He's been there for a good while. I don't think anything's going to change as far as impact on the neighborhood. Again, what's credible to me is, especially with finding some off-street parking, I think that that was key for me. So again, I'll support the application.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Carrier.
As the others, I struggle with this application. I'm feeling that, you know, while I think it's honorable that some off-street parking has been secured, you know, there's times in downtown where unit owners can, you know, acquire land close by or next to it or nearby, you know, deeded parking. I look at this like, suppose it was a new request, you know, I certainly couldn't get behind it. It's been going on a long time. I feel it's just a large overage on the, you know, land use of it. So I'm not trying to convince anybody otherwise. I just struggle, you know, to find support with it. You know, I'm not feeling it meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I certainly empathize with the situation of Mr. Caroma. I just struggle to get behind the application, you know. Something I was thinking was, you know, it sounds like there's a lot of support for it, that that's great. Maybe I'm a dissenter here. You know, I'd be inclined, if it wasn't going to be approved, to provide some significant time for a denial to take effect, like six months or so, but that probably is moot by the points I've... You know, the opinions I've heard so far. So I'm not behind this at this moment. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Mr. Shaw, does any of that help, or are you still have questions?
No, it's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. And like everyone else, I struggle with the parking, the density, the... And the fact that it is not new build makes it very different. So like Mr. Lionel, I lean in the direction of supporting. And I will now, I guess, ask if somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use variance for Paul and Dusuba Caroma of 26 Canal Street, Sheet 42, Lot 4, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 15, to maintain an existing dwelling unit on the first floor, one commercial unit, and three residential units already existing. It's an LB zone, Ward 3. We find that the variance is needed to enable the proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits that the applicant cannot achieve by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. What we talked about was, again, there's, you know, was a pre-existing condition when the owner bought the building. The owner's been there for a long time, been living there, and find that the impact was pretty much going to be negligible at this point. We find that it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Find that it might adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. Find that it's contrary to public interest, and that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the use variance.
Is there a second to this motion? Mr. Lionel, thank you. And before I call for the vote, I have a question. And, Mr. Falk, maybe you can answer this. Mr. Caroma mentioned, when in his presentation, that he's been awarded the property through the court. And if that's the case, do we make a motion for both Paul and Dusuba Caroma, or do we make a motion just for Paul?
Madam Chair, we have the owner as Paul D. and Dusuba Caroma, so that's who we have as the owner in our assessing records. So, um... But if Mr. Caroma tests that he is a sole owner now, I suppose you can say it's just granted for him.
Mr. Carrier.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify on Mr. Boucher's, uh, uh, motion. He mentioned an area variance, but this is actually a use variance, and I think that's what Mr. Boucher meant, but maybe it was just incorrectly stated because this is LB and it's for a residential unit. This is a use variance. And I think that's what Mr. Boucher meant, but I just wanted to make sure I had the record right. I want to say "use." I think we should say "use." Could I just double-check with Mr. Boucher if that's what he meant in the motion?
Absolutely. Mr. Boucher.
I believe I said "use," Mr. Carrier, but if I did misstate it, it was... I was looking at use variance, so I want to make it clear that it's use variance is what I'm saying.
Okay, great. I've got that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. So then, before, again, I call for the vote, Mr. Caroma, are you asserting that this property is now court-ordered and solely in your name? You're muted. Unmute, please.
I'll do it. Okay, you're all set, Mr. Caroma.
All right. Yes, yes, ma'am. I affirm that this property has been awarded to me. We are still going through formalities of quitclaim, deed, transfer, all that stuff. I mean, there's still some processing to be done, but the property asked is right now. It is mine, according to the...
Okay. Will that suffice, Mr. Falk, or do we leave the motion stand?
I think that's fine. I mean, we have it in our records that Paul and Dusuba own it, but if there's been revised information that he is now the sole owner, I think you're going to say that it's for him.
Okay, Mr. Boucher, would you be okay with amending your motion to reflect that Mr. Caroma asserts that the court has awarded him the property and that it is solely in his name?
I'll assert to that.
Thank you. And I will call the roll.
I think you have to have a second again on that, Mr....
Oh. Mr. Lionel, you were the second. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me call the roll. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel.
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier.
Mr. Carrier votes in opposition.
And the chair votes okay. I vote yes. That's four to one. There is the... Mr. Carrier was the extension, I mean, the negative vote. Uh, Mr. Caroma, the variance has been granted. However, there is a 30-day notice of appeal, so that someone has the option to appeal to the zoning board with, you know, dissatisfaction with our verdict, I guess, or our decision. If you have any comments, questions, concerns, please check with Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier, okay, in the Community Planning Department.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, move on to case number two. Wilmar LLC owner. Cobia Enterprises LLC is the applicant for Blackstone Drive, Sheet 8, Lot 520, requesting the following variances: One from Land Use Code Section 190-108C1 to exceed maximum wall sign area, 150 square feet permitted, 155 square feet proposed, and from Land Use Code Section 190-108E2 to exceed maximum number of wall signs, three permitted, five proposed, for proposed gas station convenience store. It's in the GB zone, Ward 2. And the five regular members will be voting on this case. Is there somebody here to present this application to the board?
My name is Gerald Poirier. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square. I am here representing the applicant. I'm here in the office. This property is located at 4 Blackstone Drive and at the corner of Amher Street. Use as a gasoline station and a corner market is allowed in the area. The applicant is new to New Hampshire, even though they have over 100 of these stores in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, and they just recently bought the gasoline station on Canal Street. They are proposing their major store over here at Blackstone Drive and Amher Street. And the signs that we have a slight problem with regarding the two variances. One is the sign that... It's not that sign. It's a wall sign on the south... There it is. The wall sign, it's... There's a sign that says Seasons Corner Market. The corner market is over on the white side of the building. And the other... The two signs that are in... That are being concerned here are the two little shell signs on the canopy. We meet the requirements... We would meet the Seasons Corner Market. You can see the Seasons Corner Market on the plan. Those are being considered as street plans, and then when you go to the canopy and you see the two shell signs, it's being considered as one apiece, so the total of five. That's the reason we're asking for variance. We feel that the signs themselves are really indicative of what the services are in the building. And the next variance that we're looking for is the variance because of the... Not the number, but the size of the signs of five feet, an extra five feet, which is about half feet on the shell signs apiece. If you look at the shell signs, you see that part of the sign is pretty much embedded in the canopy, but because of the way it's configured, it's being considered as a sign. So the two shell signs being considered with the three on the building, and that gives us the five signs, four are allowed, three, and the 155 square feet, we're allowed 150 square feet. As I said, that the... One of the things that these are... New things that are happening, the sign ordinance has a difficult time in the City of Nashville with the period of time. It will have to be revised in the near future, but when you consider what we're talking about here of the two and a half feet on each one of the shell signs, when the shell sign is mostly embedded in the canopy. And then, where the Seasons Corner Market, I think they should be considered two signs instead of... I will gladly answer any questions that the board members may have. Can they still hear me?
Sorry, I was muted. I was pretending I was Kate.
Hello.
Does any of the board have any questions for Attorney Poirier? And thank you, Attorney Poirier. And Mr. Carrier.
Uh, yes, actually, I have a question, but I really, I guess I want to direct it to Mr. Falk. You know, but it's just, if Mr. Falk, you know, Mr. Carrier was corner market, and I guess the Mary Lou is really being considered, or at least corner market being heard, is the season sign. I was just wondering if you could walk me through how you come up with wall signs. I mean, I might know the answer, but I'd prefer that you walk me through that.
Okay, I... Season sign is one sign. Corner market would be considered one sign, even though it's two words, but we would just put a box around that and consider that one sign. Yeah, Mary Lou's would be another sign, so that'd be three. And I thought there were two canopy signs, two shells.
They act... There are two shells. That's the five signs.
That's the five altogether. But the corner market, if you put a box around that, you consider that as one sign. Three signs would be on the wall of the building, and two signs would be on the canopy. That's the five.
So I'm also wondering, I guess this is more for Mr. Falk, then, on the canopy, there's like the yellow, if you want to call it that, does that factor into the sign size or not?
I'm sorry, Mr. Carrier. Can you repeat that? I'm experiencing a lot of background noise right now.
Attorney Poirier, if you could mute your microphone for a brief moment.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, so my question... My question was on the canopy. There's... So we know there's... You've clarified there's two shells, and each of those is a wall sign. There's like the long yellow stripe. Is that factored into the square footage, or is it just the shell?
Uh, we would just do the little... Two little... Uh, we would just do the, um, the little, the two little pectin boxes, the two boxes. And we, we didn't count all the, the yellow and the red stripe on the, on the canopy. Otherwise, they'd have several hundred square feet of wall sign.
Okay, uh, thank you for that answer. I guess I didn't have a question from, directly from Mr. Poirier, but, uh, thank you, Carter. I, I think I'm all set at the moment.
Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Mankara.
Maybe I should know the answer to this, but Mary Lou's Best Coffee in Town, is that merely advertising that fact? Or is Mary Lou's coffee a distinct business within the building?
Uh, it's, um, it's just, it's Dunkin' Donuts. Uh, it could be, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, it could be anything else. It's, it's not advertising other than the businesses that might, will be in there.
So Mary Lou's is a distinct business within the building?
Yes, it will be a tenant. However, I just want to tell you, that's a sign taken from a building somewhere else.
God, it might not be Mary Lou's. I got you. Okay.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Falk.
Um, just to follow up on Mr. Mankara's statement, there is a, a drive-through going around the back of the building. So there is going to be some kind of a drive-through use. We're not really sure exactly what it is yet, so, anyway. That's it.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Poirier, or Attorney Poirier? Seeing none, um, is anyone else, oh. Estafia, do you have a question?
No, I'm trying to, I have technical issues still. Oh, here are you.
All right, thanks. Um, oh, there she is.
I'm here, thank God.
Um, if, is there anyone else here who wants to speak in favor of this application? Do you see anything?
Madam Chair, I see a holdover hand from Mr. Courier, but otherwise I see none.
Okay, thank you.
And we have video from Ms. Boris. Congratulations.
I know. Is there anyone here to speak with questions, concerns, or in opposition to this application? I see nothing. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, your comments, sir.
Uh, well, I, I, uh, I, I guess I, I look in, while I hear Mr. Poirier's argument loud and clear that, you know, his belief that the sign laws are, you know, need to be updated. I, I'm a guy who sticks with the laws that were sworn in to uphold. And I, I have a bit of a, a struggle with the, the three signs on, you know, that we have the name, the Corner Market, and the coffee. I, I, I guess I'm not convinced that those are necess, feel that those would be necessary for the success of the business. I, I could see two of those being combined or smaller down. You know, maybe I could go for wall, four wall signs. I'm just not, not feeling that as much overage is needed. I'm not convinced of that, but I, I have an open mind, and I'm looking forward to hearing other opinions. But I'm not, uh, I don't think it's, uh, needed, uh, to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. That's, at this point, that's where I'm at.
Okay, Mr. Shaw.
I'm actually okay with the application. I think, uh, I think if the five signs were part of a much more significant area usage, I think that might be very different. But the fact that the area usage is, um, you know, over the negligible five square feet, uh, I don't find that, uh, the signs are such that they seem to be overwhelming or out of, you know, kind of appropriate, um, size for the site itself. So I, I guess this is the case where I think it seems that that it's basically, the area's been split up across a bunch of signs. So that's why I think it, you know, it seems reasonable to me.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel.
Okay, um, I'm in with, uh, Mr. Shaw, and that I think this is a reasonable use and that the, uh, overage on area is minimal. Um, I consider that to be more significant than the number of signs.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Ms. Boris. Ms. Boris? Please unmute yourself.
All set.
Okay, Ms. Boris?
Yes, I'm in agreement with, um, a colleague, Mr. Lionel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in support of the application. Um, uh, the square footage is, for me, is, um, I, I think more what I was looking at than the number of signs. And, um, especially with a couple of the signs, uh, to me, as, um, again, we, we see more of this, I see more of this kind of branding of, of, of how, some businesses are using symbols or whatever branding, but I think that the shell sign, the shell, uh, is kind of blends into that canopy, and I think it's something that doesn't really stick out like a sore thumb. But I think it's just something that you, you see. So again, I don't think this is, uh, going overboard and doesn't concern me, uh, in that respect. So, um, I'm supporting the application for those reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Mankara.
Well, I, I have no problem with the, uh, appearance of the signs, the number of signs. I don't think it's overwhelming. Um, I think the additional request is, you know, really de minimis of the five feet. But, yeah, actually, I'm, I'm with Mr. Courier. I, I, while I don't find the number of signs to be offensive or bothersome, um, I, I think the argument that the ordinance somehow is out of date or needs to be updated, to me, isn't compelling. So I, I actually wouldn't support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis.
Uh, I think I'm, I'm in support of the application, um, actually because of the minor, um, dimensional, um, overuse, um, just being five feet over. I think it was a more significant, um, size than I might have an issue. But, um, as it is, I think I'm okay with the application.
Okay, thank you very much. And, um, like, I think it was Mr. Lionel and maybe Mr. Boucher, who said the, um, shell signs, they just, they do blend in. You don't really notice them as something that are standing out. Um, and like Mr. Knakis said, five feet over seems a relatively small amount of footage to be requesting. While the law holds us to something else, there may be something to be said for, um, looking at adjustments. But irregardless of that, um, I think that I can support this application. So I would like to ask for a motion. Mr. Shaw.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Wilmar LLC, the owner, the applicant is Colbia Enterprises LLC at 4 Blackstone Drive. The request is for, uh, two different variances. I will be doing this, um, motion for both of these at the same time. Uh, the first is from Land Use Code Section 190-108-C1 to exceed maximum wall sign area, 150 square feet permitted, 155 square feet are proposed. And secondly, from Land Use Code Section 190-108-E2, exceed maximum number of wall signs, three are permitted, five are proposed, for a proposed gas station convenience store. This is in the GB zone. Now, the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given special conditions of the property and the benefits not by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. The, um, the, the signs are such that, uh, there's been discussion, uh, prior to the motion, uh, that two of the signs are basically more graphic in nature and not, uh, so much, uh, text. They tend to actually blend into the background. Also, the, uh, uh, the signs themselves are spread out through multiple areas of both the building facade and the canopy of the, the gas pumps. Uh, and while, uh, there's only a very minimal, uh, overage, uh, being requested, five square feet. So it's, uh, just a, a fraction, a few, uh, percentage, uh, uh, points above what's actually allowed. So the total, it's, the total number of signs do not significantly increase the area of signs that is, uh, normally permitted. Uh, so it is within the spirit and ten of the ordinance. Uh, there's no indication of any negative effects on surrounding, uh, property values that are surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice to be served. And I make the motion for the, um, passage of both of these area variances.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Okay, Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
I vote, uh, Mr. Courier votes opposed.
Thank you. And myself, Marianne McKay, votes in favor. That is four votes to one to approve the motion. Mr. Poirier, I'm sure you know, you have that 30-day window where someone may or may not appeal. And if you have any, um, questions or concerns, please direct them to Mr. Falk at the, um, planning department or Ms. Poirier. And thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well. Okay, we're going to move on to the third case. And in this case, though Mr. Knakis does not vote, he will not be taking part in the, um, the public meeting at his request. He deems he has a conflict of interest. So. Okay, Allo Mark Properties LLC care of John L. Randall, manager, owner. TMCCF New England LLC care of Shannon Netherton, deal management director, applicant. 452 Amherst Street, Sheet H, Lot 143, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15. Table 15-1, Number 93, to allow a convenience store slash gas station where 75% of the building gross floor area is otherwise required to be reserved for uses in the industrial and manufacturing category, PI slash MU Zone Ward 2. Is there anyone here to present this application?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and other members of the board. My name is John Smolak, uh, with the law firm, Smolak and Vaughn, 21 High Street, North Andover, Mass, representing the applicant, TMCCF New England LLC.
Thank you, Attorney Smolak. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, before we get started, I wanted to introduce, uh, certain members of the project team. Some of whom are here from this evening, including Tracy Rule, who's the Director of Real Estate Development with TM Crowley Associates, uh, for the applicant. And as an aside, uh, TM Crowley is what is called a preferred developer that works with Cumberland Farms to secure approvals for projects such as that proposed, uh, this evening. Also with us are Chris Tabula, Project Manager with Raymond Peterson, Inc., or GPI. And lastly, Heather Montecup of GPI, our Project Traffic Engineer. Uh, these members of the project team are present should you have any operational layout or traffic questions concerning the proposal. As, as, uh, shared indicated, the applicant is requesting a use variance to allow for the development of the entire property for use as a commercial convenience store with a gas station. And, uh, as indicated, uh, the Land Use Code provides that certain designated commercial uses are permitted only as part of a site plan on which at least 75% of the gross floor area is reserved for uses listed in the industrial and manufacturing category. And since the project use is supposed to be entirely commercial and the convenience store with a gas station, you're requesting the relief as presented in the application.
Mr. Smolak, could you do me a favor, please? Could you speak closer to your mic because you fade in and out, and we don't want to lose what you're saying?
Okay, I apologize.
Oh, much better. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. If we could, uh, turn to the first slide, Kate, please, uh, which is an existing conditions aerial. The, uh, subject property at 452 Amherst Street is approximately 1.15 acres in size and is located on the north side of Amherst Street at the corner of Townsend West. Actually, uh, if there was a slide, uh, prior to this slide, uh,
Yeah, I was on that slide, and you asked me to move. I wasn't sure if I was on the wrong one.
My apologies. And so this is an area depicting the general, uh, neighborhood. And as you see, the property, um, as you know, the property is the site of the former Country Tavern Restaurant, which recently announced its permanent closure. Uh, the property is bounded to the north, which is the bottom of the plan, by Amherst Street, beyond which is the Great Harvest Bread Company, Pete's Coffee, uh, Medical Office Building, and T-Mobile, all within either the general business or highway business zoning district. To the south or to the rear of the property, uh, the property is bounded by what are known as Two and Four Townsend West, which include a number of businesses, uh, business units contained within those two buildings. To the east or the left side of the property is Portland Glass and Mark Lawrence Photographers. And then to the west, uh, the site is bounded by Townsend West, beyond which is a medical center, computer learning center, and a Whitebird Brewing. If we, uh, move to the next slide, Kate, uh, that's the existing conditions, uh, plan. Thank you. Um, the property is currently improved, as everyone is aware of, uh, approximate. So it's, it's the old Country Tavern Restaurant, which is, uh, a structure that's approximately, uh, 4,100 square feet in size with approximately 50 parking spaces. As background, back in 1981, zoning board of adjustment had granted, uh, the applicant at the time, a use variance to convert the existing house and barn to a restaurant use with a special exception to release parking. And since 1982, we understand Country Tavern Restaurant had operated at the property until its recent closure. Um, the property is located entirely within the park industrial and the mixed-use overlay zoning districts. Uh, we note that back in, uh, 2018, the property, along with other adjacent properties, uh, rezoned from airport industrial to PI and mixed use. And as noted in the materials and the minutes from the rezoning hearing before the Planning and Economic Development Committee at the time, the Director of Community Development had stated that by adding the park industrial and the mixed-use overlay, it, uh, allows flexibility to actually reflect what's going on in these lots. And these lots are oriented, uh, to Amherst Street, not the airport. So this area has changed significantly from being a very industrial area to being, uh, very much reflective of Amherst Street. And so due to these emerging development patterns along Amherst Street, which are different from the airport, the property, along with certain other properties, will result to reflect these, uh, different development patterns. If we could, uh, please move to the next slide, which shows the proposed project site plan. The site, as I indicated, um, is a proposed, uh, site of a, of those Cumberland Farms, uh, retail convenience store with gas services. Uh, the project includes the proposed The project includes the proposed construction of a 4,900-plus-square-foot colonial-style retail convenience store, which will replace the existing restaurant building, which is 4,100 square feet. The project will also include installation of a single row of fuel dispensers, which will be aligned to be parallel with Amherst Street in order to enhance onsite circulation. And as I'll explain to you shortly, the improvements will be located further back or further south from Amherst Street than existing conditions. The project also includes the construction of a new canopy with a stand-up fire suppression system above the gas dispensers. And if we move to the next slide, this aerial really is an overlay of the proposed project onto an existing aerial, and the proposed improvements are highlighted in black. And as you can see, the proposed convenience store and the retail gas improvements are being proposed to be located much further back from Amherst Street than existing conditions. And this change in layout also enables us to provide a better traffic circulation within the surrounding site. And if we can go to the next slide, which is a color rendering landscape and parking configuration on the site. For the site, we're proposing the construction of 25 parking spaces, where 25 spaces are required, which doesn't include additional spaces available at the gas dispensers, as well as an upgrade enhancement of landscaping throughout the property, particularly along Amherst Street and Townsend West, as well as to the rear of the property. It's important to note, this project will not include any car wash and won't include any drive-up facilities. And lastly, the next four slides show the, a before and an after depiction of the site from certain vantage points. So this first slide is looking from Amherst Street, south westerly to the site towards Townsend West. And then the next slide is a photo simulation of that same view of what the proposed facility would be, you would ask, from this location. The following slide shows an existing view looking easterly across the site from Townsend West. And then the last slide depicts this view of the proposed project as if you were standing on Townsend West looking east. So the applicant is, again, requesting, respectfully requesting a use variance. I'd be happy to summarize the variance criteria, but they are more detailed in the application. And we are also mindful of the fact that we received several, and the board has received correspondence from several budding landowners to the rear of the site at Two Townsend West. All fair questions. We would be happy to respond to those either now or through the public comment period. It's at your pleasure. And again, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Mr. Courier?
Yeah, I was just wondering, on our application on page four, there's an area kind of near Townsend West where it says proposed snow storage. But then a little bit later, it looks like that's going to be vegetation and trees. So I'm wondering if Mr. Smolak could just clarify the proposed snow storage, like if he takes, take a look at that sheet four on right by that and right just, it would be south of the Townsend West entrance. And is, just to clarify, is that the proposed snow storage? Because it doesn't seem to jive with the vegetation plan. I think there's a couple of trees there.
Madam Chair, if I may respond?
Absolutely.
Sure. If I could have Chris Tumula of GPI respond to that question?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Chris Tumula, I'm a project manager at Greenman Peterson.
And can we have your address also, sir?
Yep, yep. 44 Styles Road in Salem, Hampshire. Currently, I'm currently in my office all by myself. Yeah, so the area in question is, if you're looking at Townsend, Townsend West to the right of the driveway entrance, we are calling out a snow storage area in there, and there is some landscaping in there. We are also calling snow storage out in front of the canopy within the landscaped area, and as well as to the left-hand side of the site where the underground fuel storage tanks are. When we were putting the landscaping plan together, we were trying to come up with a landscaping plan that provided the, that provided the essential buffer along Townsend West with the ability that we could still stockpile snow in that area. We could simply just remove the note altogether. And obviously, if snow storage becomes an issue onsite, Cumberland Farms will make sure that they truck all the snow offsite to make sure that there's no impact to any of the parking spaces or any of the customer conveniences.
Mr. Courier, does that answer your questions, or do you have a follow-up?
Yes, that answers the question. Thank you. I did have another question, and that is on the underground infiltration system. It looks like 100% of the stormwater is going to be infiltrated onsite, and I was just wondering if Mr. Tumula could clarify if that's the case?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely, I can clarify that. Being that this is a gas station development, the underground stormwater system is actually a closed pipe drainage system. It's not an infiltration system. Being that it is a gas station, we don't promote infiltrating groundwater onsite. So basically, that system will capture runoff from the various catch basins onsite. It'll store it in that system. We also take the additional measures of making that system a watertight system, so there's no further infiltration through the seams of the joints. All of the site runoff is captured onsite, detained onsite, treated onsite, and then ultimately discharged out through a, an outlet control structure, and then ultimately to the head wall that's located a little bit further down Townsend West.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm all set, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else on the board have any questions? I see none. Kate, you?
I'm, Madam Chair.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Courier?
Sorry about that. Yeah, I did have one other question, and that is, the application mentions a future widening project. And while it's maybe not explicitly tied to this application, I didn't know if someone from the applicant could speak about when that might happen and how wide that might be, and would that impede on any of the site, or is it wide enough that it doesn't impact the site as proposed?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is John Smolak. I'd like to have Heather Monticup from GPI respond to that. That's a good question.
Heather, if you could just please give us your name and address for the record, and if you are alone, or who is with you?
Yeah, my name is Heather Monticup. I am with Greenman Peterson, where the traffic engineers for the project. Our office is at 181 Ballard Vale Street in Wilmington, Mass, and I am alone in my home bedroom slash office. Yes, I can answer that question. The NHDOT actually has two projects that they've merged into one along Amherst Street. Their projects number 10136A and 10136B. They've combined these into two projects. Right now, I don't think there is a specific date on when these will be implemented, however they are on the draft 10-year improvement, improvement plan. It includes adding another lane in each direction on Amherst Street, both eastbound and westbound, along with bicycle shoulders and sidewalks. And this is between Somerset Parkway and Selina Ave. We don't exactly, I'm not sure exactly how much land and how the widening is going to be, but I know we've had discussions with the, with the applicant, and if there is a bit of sliver widening that needs to take place or easements, I believe that Cumberland Farms would be amenable to that. But there is a, I don't know if you can go back to the site plan, but there is a very wide swath of available right-of-way in front of the site, so we don't anticipate any takings on the site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. If you could, thanks, Kate. Any other questions? Then I'm going to ask if anyone else is here to speak in favor of this application. Do you have anything, Kate?
I'm not seeing anything, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Then I would ask if there's anyone here who has any comments, questions, concerns, or wants to speak opposed to this application. Okay, thanks, Kate. I have in my possession, as I am sure the full board does, two emails, and I'll read them into the record. "Good afternoon. Please do not allow the convenience store gas station at 452 Amherst Street. The current building is historical and should be treated as such. There are already many and enough store gas stations on Amherst Street. Please say no to this request." Thank you. Dwight Stevens Eagle II Construction Incorporated, Two Townsend West, Suite 7, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063. And the second one is, states, "Good afternoon. Please be advised that we are against the proposal of a convenience store gas station at 452 Amherst Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. The current building is a historical building and should not be torn down. There are plenty of store gas stations on Amherst Street. We do not need another one. Please do not allow this. Sincerely, Suzette J. Stevens, Eagle II Construction Incorporated, Two Townsend West, Suite 7, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03063." Mr. Smolak? Whoops, Mr. Falk?
Madam Chair, I think there were three other emails that were sent to the board. One from Brian Green, one from Leslie Geto, and one from Jack Schroeder.
I don't have them, whether I didn't see them or I didn't download them. Could you read them in for the record, Mr. Falk?
They were sent this afternoon. It was kind of late when we got them. I would have to go on another computer system to get them. Hold on. If anyone else has them, help me out here.
Any, does anyone else on the board have those emails?
I have a couple of them handy right now.
Mr. Shaw, do you want to read what you have into the record, please?
Sure. So the first one is from Dwight Stevens.
No, I have Dwight. We read Dwight Stevens, and we read Suzette Stevens.
Okay. Sorry.
Madam Chair, I have a letter from Leslie Geto, LG Realty Trust.
All right. Kate, Mr. Shaw, if you don't have that, do you want Kate to read that into the record? Or do you have that?
I'm trying to pull it up right now, but maybe Kate should get it, since she's got it handy.
I think I have it. And I have, I have one from a, Jack Schroeder. Yeah, I have one from Leslie Geto also. Okay, I will, I will read, shall I read this into the record?
Please, Mr. Lionel.
This is from Leslie Geto, who gives, says from LG Realty Trust, owner of Two Townsend West units eight, nine, and 10. "We all, all have had issues with being able to get traction going up Townsend in the winter during and after storms. Here are some questions. One, with gas station side entrance onto Townsend West being at a steep grade, what additional plowing and sanding will the gas station provide, as well as the city provide, to enable cars from the gas station to enter and exit the facility safely, without endangering drivers trying to make it up the hill and get onto Amherst Street? Townsend West is already a hazard to drive up on an icy day, and to stop for a multitude of cars entering and exiting via the Townsend exit can make it even more hazardous, causing backups and accidents. Two, does the city feel the distance from the gas station cutout and our entrance at Two Townsend West being sufficient of a distance with increased traffic? Three, is there enough turn radius for tractor trailers and trucks entering or leaving the gas station via Townsend West without causing a hazard or possible jackknife with that sharp turn on an icy day? Four, what is the plan for the additional drainage and runoff and possible pooling at the entrance of Two Townsend West? Is there a plan of putting in any extra catch basins or sewers for the additional flow of water from the gas stations melting snow or rain coming down onto Townsend from their cutout? History shows that there is pooling already at the base of Two Townsend West. I understand the need for progress, however, is this the best we can do for Nashua, another gas station?" So that's from Leslie Geto. And then one, let's see. I have one from Jack Schroeder, Schroeder. I'll read that one. Does not, okay. "I am one of the property owners of Two Townsend West Unit 3, Nashua. Please review and answer the following questions on the planned Cumberland Farms proposed for the Country Tavern property at 452 Amherst Street. I am concerned with the traffic turning from Townsend West or from Amherst Street into the proposed Cumberland Farms. Someone making a right-hand turn could run into cars exiting and entering onto Amherst Street to and from the proposed Cumberland Farms gas station. In winter, this will even be, be even worse. When there is snow on the Townsend West hill, in winter, some cars slip and lose traction going up the hill. A car turning left from Townsend West into the Cumberland Farms could have trouble making the turn in winter and cause a backup onto Amherst Street. Are any new changes to the traffic lights or main roadways planned to help eliminate this potential problem?" And then there's, "Will there be snow storage on the site? The site seems small after all the changes are made, and I do not see any areas for snow storage. If snow is stored on the site, where will the snow water runoff to? Will the builder need to access Townsend West during construction of large retaining wall abutting our property? Will the trees on the property line be removed? The site plan is unclear on what the plans are for the trees on the property line close to where the retaining wall goes. I would like to see the trees remain to help block the retaining wall. Is there any ledge on the site? If there is, will blasting be required during construction? If there will be blasting, what safeguards will be taken to protect the Townsend West property? What materials will be installed in the back of the building? The plans appear to show some type of clavards. What will the retaining wall be made of? Is this a concrete wall or some other retaining wall? Thank you, Jack." And so we have the message from Brian Green. Has that been read into the record?
No, Mr. Lionel.
Okay, I will read this one also. This is from Brian Green of Greensales, Inc., Two Townsend West Unit 1. Let's see. "Concerned about runoff of fuel, snow, and ice melt along with salt over the retaining wall into our property, will proper drainage be installed and regularly be monitored by the city? All of the large trees need to stay separating the rear Cumberland Farms retaining wall slash fence with Two Townsend West. We believe these trees are on both properties. Please confirm they will be staying. Two Townsend West will be negatively impacted more than any other surrounding property. The addition of an eight-foot retaining wall, six to eight feet of fence, and a 20-foot building, 36 feet total, will severely impact the views and aesthetics from the front of our building. This will not increase the value of our property as stated in the planning documents. It will have just the opposite effect and reduce our property values. How will this positively impact us and our property values? Does Amherst Street really need another gas station and convenience store? Is this all about positioning and getting closer to Exit 8 than other existing gas stations and convenience stores?" than other existing gas stations and convenience stores? So that's the last message that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Carter, were that all of the messages that I personally was missing?
Madam Chair, yes, there were five altogether, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then. Mr. Smolak, you're going to have five minutes, sir, you or whoever. Well, actually, only one person can respond. I don't know, maybe you can determine who would like to respond to some of these concerns and questions.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair. The information regarding historic is in the materials that I've provided to the board as part of the application. So I believe these are more site-related issues. So I would have the discussion turned over to Christopher Tumula.
Thanks, John. Again, Chris Tumula, GPI. So I'll try to address the comments as best possible. I think we talked about snow storage early on. There is room for snow storage on site. With regard to snow storage and snow melt on site, the entire site is curbed and the entire site is graded. So all runoff and all snow melt within the parking lot, paved aisles and driveways will be captured with deep sump hooded catch basins treated with hydrodynamic separators and/or oil-water separators. And all of the pavement runoff be collected in the stormwater drainage system with none of the runoff going from the paved parking lot over the retaining wall towards the Two Townsend West property. With regards to the retaining wall, this is a large segmented block-type retaining wall, just like you would see in a lot of the commercial developments. It's typically a ready rock type retaining wall. It has a decorative stone face. It's not a poured concrete wall. And it's used, like I said, in many, many commercial developments. We don't by any means feel that it's a detriment to the site. And in fact, we think it's an actual beneficial design element as we're not putting a poured concrete wall. The trees on site, as part of our landscaping plan, we are showing trees along the frontage of both Townsend West as well as Amherst Street. We're trying to minimize the amount of tree disturbance and tree line in the rear of the site. The existing parking lot goes pretty close to the existing tree line along the southeast portion of the site. The tree line will essentially be remaining as is. When you come down towards Townsend West, there will be some tree clearing because we have to tie into the existing drainage system. But we will do our best to maintain, make sure we maintain the existing tree cover where possible. With regard to ledge, we've done some geotechnical explorations on site. Ledge is essentially 14 to 16 feet below existing grade. If there is some places where there are some ledge outcroppings, we would perform line drilling or hole ramming with blasting being the absolute last possible way of getting rid of the ledge out there. But again, we don't see that being an issue on this site. With regards to the material in the back of the building, the back of the building is the same as the front of the building. It's a cream-colored clapboard siding. There's the Cumberland Farms green band that goes around the building, white trim. And the architectural design elements, like you would see on the front of the building, are essentially around the entire building itself. With regards to, again, fuel runoff and ice melt, again, it's all being collected in our stormwater drainage system. The turning radius, so the tractor trailer for the fuel delivery truck, they'll come in along Townsend West. They'll take a left at the light, go downtowns and west, take a left into the site, circulate around, drop fuel on the leftmost property line. The fuel tanker truck will be out of the way of any vehicular traffic or pedestrians. And then they will access the site, they will exit the site out Amherst Street. And there's a truck turning plan as part of our overall site plan. But there's no issue with access getting in and out of the site from the truck turn, from the tractor trailer. They will not be leaving the site via Townsend West.
You have about a minute, sir.
Yep. I think that covers most of the questions or all the questions.
The only part that I was listening for also was when the question was asked about the roads and the icing and the incline.
Sure, yeah. So I mean, obviously Townsend West is an existing road. Amherst Street's an existing road. We can't do anything about that. What we've done to mitigate any stormwater runoff, discharging off-site, is we do have a trench drain at the lowest part of our site to capture all site runoff. Cumberland Farms will have a private contractor making sure that they're plowing their site, sanding their site, and making sure that it's safe for, you know, people to get in and out of the site. There's nothing we can do with the existing grades that are on both Townsend West or Amherst Street.
Thank you very much. And now, since there's no one else that can speak to any of the emails, is any member of the board, Mr. Lionel?
I see one of the letter writers, Jack Schrader. I don't know whether he wants to speak.
Does he want to speak? Mr. Schrader, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Would you like to speak?
I am, you know, a little concerned about the trucks and traffic turning off of Amherst Street. And when cars are going up the hill and leaving from Townsend West and getting onto Amherst Street, it just seems to me like there's going to be a real bottleneck of traffic there in the future. I don't know what can be done to alleviate that possible problem.
Mr. Tumula.
If the board will allow, Heather is a traffic engineer, and she'd be more apt to answer this question.
Yeah, I wondered, and Heather, if it's okay, since we did have one of the letter writers actually present, you might, if you could, again, give us your name and your information, but you can respond to Mr. Schroder's concerns.
Yes, absolutely. Again, Heather Monacup with Greenman Peterson at 181 Ballard's Vale Street in Wilmington, Mass. And I am alone. We did prepare a full traffic impact and access study, and I know his concerns are for getting into and out of the driveways. However, we have done site distance measurements, and they meet all ASHTO and city regulations. So we exceed the minimum requirements for that, even with the grades on Townsend West. So the driveways are in a safe location. We would deem them, there is plenty of site distance for vehicles. The peak hour, I'm sorry, the 95th percentile queues, so probably a couple times in a peak hour, will extend past the site driveway. However, there's ample availability on site for queuing of those vehicles. And you have to remember too, that the vehicles, Townsend West has the right of way. So the vehicles in the site driveway do have to yield to those oncoming cars on Townsend West. So like I said, I think that all comes down to the site distance measurements that we've done that exceed the ASHTO and city standards.
Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
And I hope that responds, Mr. Schroder, to your concerns. Yes?
Well, so the traffic now, it seems that, well, when Country Tavern was in operation, the traffic was coming in and out later in the day, pretty much only in the evening. And now this, the new traffic pattern is going to be happening all day long. And I think moving the entrance closer to Amherst Street is going to make it tighter for the cars going in and out of that site. I just see it as a traffic nightmare in the future. Somebody that goes to work there every day and goes in and out of that intersection every day. It is a very busy intersection already. Now you're going to add a lot of cars coming in and out of a convenience store every day. It's just going to be a greater nightmare going home.
Mr. Schroder, I think that at this point, should this application pass this board, it will then go to the planning board. And the planning board is where all of these types of questions will be responded to and will have to be answered in much greater detail. The traffic patterns, these are not our purview. And so at this point, because we've, you know, we've exceeded our time limits, I'm going to just now continue on with our, finish the public hearing and move into the public meeting portion. But again, I would, if this passes, I would suggest you absolutely attend that planning board meeting. That's where your comments and questions will be most appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome. And so I'm going to, at this point in time, close the public hearing, and I'm going to open the public meeting. And Mr. Minkara, sir?
So I feel like I'm speaking out of turn, but very often, you know, we see applications coming before this board that ask for significant deviations from what's allowed under zoning. And very often, the case is made that, you know, since the time the zoning was in place, the area, the character of the area has changed. A number of things have happened that make, there's a disconnect between the way the area is zoned and the way it's being used. In this case, though, we're looking at an area that was rezoned by the city to this current zoning about a year and a half ago. And I look at the application, the comments in the application itself, where it notes at the hearing on October 16, 2018, the community development director said, "By adding the park industrial and mixed-use overlay, it allows for flexibility to actually reflect what's going on on these lots." So this is a scenario where, just a year and a half ago, the city rezoned this area, and they actually looked at how these properties were being used and determined that the zoning that was put into place, that was just adopted by the city, was the way to address it. And so to me, it's troubling to see that we would actually have an application before us that says, well, you know, somehow the city either missed the mark, didn't know what it was doing when it was zoning. I don't think that it's our place as a zoning board to be making those kinds of determinations. This is clearly a scenario where the city made a very deliberate choice in how to rezone this property. And to me, that's not something we should overturn.
Thank you, Mr. Minkara. Mr. Boucher? Comment, sir?
I'm not sure about this one. This is the one I'm struggling with a little bit. I, you know, it's not the problem with, I guess I don't have a problem with the gas station itself. I think I'm more kind of where Mr. Minkara is right now. And I guess I need to hear some more before I can, you know, move on or comment some more. I'm just not anywhere right now with this.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I think Mr. Minkara really made a great point. And I think in some ways, you know, you could look at this application and say, oh, you know, it hadn't really been in a use that was meeting the zoning because of it being the restaurant, but that had been in existence for, you know, almost 40 years. So there was that. But then to consider the fact that this had been just very recently rezoned because, you know, we have had many cases asking for relief within what had been just the AI zone. This was an attempt to rectify that. So I think the proposal itself, I think, is well done. I think it seems like it would actually be a good usage of the property. I think the problem is, don't believe we really have met, you know, I guess I'm struggling to see how we can essentially say that this is meeting, you know, should be relief given with use based on, again, this very recent kind of recategorization of this area.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Lionel?
I am with my fellow board members in saying that this does not seem to be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, given the rezoning happening so recently. There's nothing particularly special about this property that makes it uniquely suited to a gas station and convenience store. I'll note that we just approved something for another gas station and convenience store being built down the road on Amherst Street, although that's in a zone where that's allowed. So I don't, as much as I think that the proposal is a really nice gas station and convenience store, I can't in good conscience support it, given the recent zoning choice by the city for this property.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Carrier?
I guess I'm at the center again here this evening in that I was looking at this, while I certainly appreciate Mr. Minkara's take on it. And I struggled with that at first, but I also, as soon as you get off Amherst Street going towards the airport, on all those streets that run along there, a lot of the PIMU zone, or what was the AI zone, I think is very well respected, you might say. And, you know, I was looking at this particular lot being, you know, that it's fronted on Amherst Street. And, you know, you have the harvest bread and the other, you know, much more retail, certainly not industrial or manufacturing categories, kind of left, right across the street. That quelled my heartburn on the 75% not being met for the industrial manufacturing, again, that it's running on Amherst Street. And so even though I concur, this was just rezoned, the fact that it's right on Amherst Street and there's basically retail uses like this all up and down Amherst Street, I'm okay with not meeting the 75%. I just wanted to throw a few other things out, and that is, there was one thing in one of the letters in opposition that mentioned about water ponding at the base of Townsend West. I don't know if I fully understand that, but I'm assuming that's because Townsend West goes downhill, you might say. Maybe there's a water issue down further to the airport. But I think Mr. Tumula covered that in that all the water on site is getting retained on site. So if this were approved, I didn't think there'd be any more, certainly less runoff. So if there is an issue there at the base of Townsend West, if this were approved, I don't think there'd be any negative impact. I think it would be a positive impact on that. And I just wanted to get that out. Who knows if this will be approved or not? But as I sit here, I'm in support of the application. Again, because it fronts on Amherst Street, I'd be willing to, you know, kind of, and it's surrounded by retail, I think it's reasonable. it's surrounded by retail, I, I, I think it, it's reasonable to not maintain the, you know, the 75% of gross floor area reserved for industrial manufacturing. That's, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Mr. Carrier. Ms. Boras, do you have any comments or thoughts? Oh, she, Esther, can you hear me?
I think she's having trouble with her audio.
Yeah, I, she said she was hearing, you know, maybe half.
She might type something into chat.
So, I don't know, I, I'm struggling with this just as well. I, I see, I see both sides and, and it's kind of difficult. I understand it was just rezoned, but then again, a year and a half ago, we had a tavern sitting there, the Country Tavern, a restaurant, and it, it was right there facing Amherst Street. Now, I agree that right there at Amherst Street, there's just so much industry. I don't know. I guess what I'm going to do is just see where we go with a motion on this, see if there is a motion. And is there maybe Mr. Lionel? No, Mr. Lionel, you were, you were okay. But Mr. Shaw, you and Mr. Boucher also said you were struggling. Are you in any better position or are you still struggling? Mr. Boucher?
I, I never really considered what Mr. Carrier had, had suggested. It's starting to make a little bit more sense to me. I, I think, again, I guess, at this point, I, I think maybe it's weighing a little bit more on me that it is fronting Amherst Street. So I, I think I could support it with that notion in mind. I think if it was one property removed down Towns and West, I could not at all. But, but now I think that I could support it for that reason. You know, still knowing that, you know, this is freshly rezoned, but again, I, I think Mr. Carrier makes a good point. So therefore, I think I'm going to support the, I, I would be supporting the application at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Shaw, you two had a question mark.
Yeah, I, I guess I actually, you know, I appreciate Mr. Carrier's point, but I, I guess I still kind of come back to, the opportunity was there to reflect in the rezoning that intent to allow for more of the commercial highway business, general business type of use in that part of the, you know, this AI zone. So that wasn't chosen to be pursued. I, I mean, I agree that there's very much a feel that, you know, especially fronting Amherst Street, it's very, it's very commercial, but I guess, I feel like this is a case of we're, you know, we felt other times where we don't want to overstep because we're essentially, I think, starting to, you know, kind of go down that slippery slope of what amounts to this board acting as rezoning in the area of the properties. And so, I, I actually think that it's just not really appropriate for us to question the thought and decision-making that went into this rezoning, because I think that nature of the commercial aspect, yeah, I agree, and we always have transition zones, but if, if the intent was to allow this kind of business in this part of the zone, it should have been reflected as such. And I don't think anything's changed significantly or markedly in the last year and a half, you know, why there would be some different sensitivity. In fact, part of that, those changes were done to, you know, deal with the fact that there were so, so many cases asking for relief from the more strict pure AI zone. So I, I'm actually feeling more steadfast that the, the, it's inappropriate for us to grant this. And I don't see that the, that the criteria is met by a, simply noting that the district across the other side of Amherst Street is zoned differently and would allow this. This, this, this zone does not. So I, I can't, I can't come to support it.
Then, is there someone who would like to entertain a motion? Mr. Carrier?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion here, you know, because I think as a board, we need to come to closure one way or the other. So I'll make a motion and, and we'll see if it gets seconded and see where it goes. Are you okay with that, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm making a motion on behalf of Alamar Property, 452 Amherst Street. Again, it's a use variance motion, and it is to allow a convenience gas station where 75% of the building gross floor area is otherwise required to be reserved for uses in the industrial and manufacturing category. At, at least I believe that the value is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, which, which I would note in the application is that there's a heavy retail on other fronting neighboring properties on Amherst Street. And the longstanding restaurant has, has gone out of business and, and I, and at least I feel it's, there's not another reasonably feasible method for the applicant to pursue. I think it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance and will not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. I know we've heard testimony counter to that, but I, I think a viable business here would help surrounding parcels. And, and I believe it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served. So I make a motion to approve as presented.
And do we have a second? Mr. Boucher seconds that motion, and I will call the roll. Mr. Carrier?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Mr. Shaw?
I vote against the motion.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in opposition.
And myself? I think I'm going to vote in favor. That is three votes to two. And we, your motion carries, Mr. Smolak. Obviously, it barely carried, we, but we carried. And so, as a board, that's how we voted. You have a 30-day window, sir, of appeal. If there's any questions, comments, concerns, please take them up with Mr. Falk. And, thank you. And we will, whoops, Mr. Carrier, yes?
I just needed to catch up on the minutes. Could, could we take like a five-minute break and I'll catch up here as clerk?
Yes, that's what I was going to do.
Okay.
So in that instance, and again, thank you, Mr. Smolak, for presenting. Thank you, Heather, and thank you, Mr. Tamola, for coming.
Thank you for your time.
You're quite welcome. And as previously stated, was my thoughts, we are going to take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think we're all back. I need to let you all know that I'm now not alone in the room. My dog has joined me. Well, he was kept away as long as they could keep him, but he made the choice. He wasn't staying away anymore. He's my little baby. So there he is. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Thank you for bearing with us and giving us this time. And I'm going to call case number four. This is BNA Construction LLC. The owner, Joshua and Caleb Becker are the applicants. 32 Groton Road, number 90, to remove three non-conforming structures and construct a new barn workshop office or carpentry shop with an accessory residential unit on the second floor. This is the R40 Zone Ward Five. Is there anyone here to present this case?
Yes, Joshua Becker.
Okay, Joshua, if you would just give us your name and your address, and if you're alone, or if you are not alone, who's in the room with you?
Okay. My name is Joshua Becker. I live at 341 Silver Lake Road in Hollis, New Hampshire. My office is at 13 Columbia Drive, Unit Two, in Amherst, New Hampshire. And I'm currently being accompanied by my brother Caleb, the co-applicant, and I am in my living room right now. But no doubt.
Well, I'm sorry. You may proceed, sir.
All righty. So my brother and I have come before the board this evening to discuss the property at 32 Groton Road in Nashua, New Hampshire. As a little bit of history on this, on this project, for me and my family, a little under a year ago, one of our friends, Corey Holt, who lived at 26 Groton Road, had given my brother Caleb a call, had mentioned that he's moving to California and that he would be, and offered us the opportunity to purchase his property. So we systematically did. As, as we were closing on the property, the lovely Mrs. Holt, we went over to her house and we discussed it with her as well. That's, that's Corey Holt's mom. And we had asked him, asked her, rather, if she would be willing to sell us her property. After some discussion on the matter, she agreed to sell us the property. Currently, the property is being used by a construction company and landscaping material provider called Longos Landscaping and Longos Construction. This property has been used for the past better part of 50 years as a, as a sawmill. And then for the past about approximately 10 years or so, it's been, give or take, it's been leased out to Longos Landscaping, where he has heavy equipment, he sells landscaping materials, he has hardscapes, earthworks, and things such as those. However, we purchased this property with the intent of taking down the three existing buildings that are on site there. They're not really suitable use for what we do. We, we have a very small, family-owned and operated carpentry business, my brother and I, and we have just a couple of employees. And we, we built some cabinets and built-ins and things like that. And these, these built, these structures aren't really suitable for us. However, as, after we, as we purchased the property and we started doing some investigation, we come to realize that the property is actually not zoned for any kind of business or commercial or anything like that. It was zoned R40 for residential. So that brought us to the, the conversation where we would need to come before, before the board here and discuss our intent to rip down the three existing non-conforming structures and put up a new one. Since then, it, it's been very important for us, very, very important for us, to highlight the nature of the area around. This property, right along this road, has been in the Terrell and Holt family for many, many generations. And it's been used as agricultural. There was a barn on this property in the past, and then there was a sawmill that was built there. And then later on, it became an excavation landscaping and construction supply company later on. So we enlisted an architect out of Amherst, Mass. We told them our desire, that we really wanted to highlight the natural area that was around there, and we really wanted to bring out what we felt was the spirit of the area. There's been large parcels of property that's been donated to the city from the Terrell family and the Holt family in the past, and it's been dedicated to conservation. As well as Mrs. Holt, she has a, a large field next door. So we really wanted to keep the idea or the feel of, of a real farming community still in that area. So that's why we proposed this type of structure right here, to, to remove those two and, and really have, build a structure that would complement the area nicely. And at the same time, remove some of the other elements that the, the surrounding neighborhood has had over the past 50 years, such as tractor-trailer trucks, loaders, heavy equipment being brought in and out, deliveries of hardscapes, bark mulch, all kinds of different things such as those. There's a, I, I think it's probably, I, I tried to count one day, there's probably 30 or 40 different trips in and out, in and off of that property, bringing equipment, bobcats, excavators, things like that, in and out, because he operates a landscaping business. So we allowed the current tenant, Mr. Longo, to fulfill his lease and stay on the property as long as we possibly could. But now it's, it's coming to the conclusion of his time there, where we're going to be asking him to leave, so that we can be taking, taking these buildings down and also start to renovate the property so it would suit our needs. So I think that we've, we've included a, a pretty good synopsis of exactly what these, of what this, this current tenant does right now. He does concrete work, form work, small heavy equipment, things like that. And I think that we'll be adding a real benefit to the neighborhood by, by changing out these structures and adding something that would really come to a, a benefit for the neighborhood and increase the property values as well. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Does the board or anyone on the board have any questions? I don't see any. Do you, Kate?
Mary Ann, I see none.
Thanks. Okay. Seeing no questions, I'm going to ask, is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Raise your hand, Pat.
I think she's muted.
Who are we talking about?
She should be fine now.
Ms. Holt.
Ms. Holt, would you like to say something?
Cannot hear her.
She's not muted. But.
She's not.
Wait a minute. Whoa, whoa, whoa. She should be okay now. Mrs. Holt, I believe you can speak.
Can't hear her.
You can't hear her.
She could be muted locally or on computer.
Yeah, I mute myself on my phone all the time when I'm talking on phone calls. Smartphone it may be, but not really.
Yeah, not for me. I do the same thing. So there you go. Yeah, she seems to be doing the same thing for herself. Jeez, I wonder, Mrs. Holt, if you can hear me, because we can't hear you, can you shake your head up and down? You can hear us. Okay. Are you having audio difficulties? Okay, well then, you're here to speak in favor. That's the part, portion of the meeting we're at. And you are putting your thumb up, so I'm assuming you are in favor. I don't know how we're going to incorporate this into the minutes and, but I can visually see that you had a thumb up. Mr. Carrier?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw out, being that Ms. Holt was referenced by Mr. Becker, maybe Mr. Becker would care to share what he thinks Ms. Holt's going to say, and then you could see if Ms. Holt gives a thumbs up or thumbs down to that. I don't want to overstep my bounds, but it might just be a way to work around here.
She apparently liked your suggestion, Mr. Carrier.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you and we can see you too.
Okay, yes. Pat is very, is, is a very generous person. And she's very well respected in the community. She's been somebody who's, who's worked very hard to maintain her family and take care of the, the surrounding area and the neighborhood that she lives in. So one, this was important for us to work with her family as well during this transition time during the purchase, so that we made sure that we could present something that would be, that would complement the area nicely. So we worked hard with her. So I think that, that the general facade of the building itself, the fact that we're cutting down on a lot of the traffic going in and out of the property, the deliveries that happen every single day, the heavy machinery that operates, or operates there, loading dump trucks full of bark mulch and material every day. I think this is something that's really going to be a benefit for her, because she actually lives at 18 Groton Road. So, which is, which is one of the, not the next house, but it's, it's virtually the next one after that. So she ends, ends up having a lot of this traffic go back and forth in the front of her house as well. And that's one of the things we discussed as well during this transition period, was how this was going to be resolved for her and her family.
Mr. Becker, during any of these conversations, negotiations, the process, are there any exact words that you could remember that Mrs. Holt herself stated that would convey to the board that what her position was?
She says, "I'm super good-looking and charismatic, and I'm building a beautiful building that she loves."
She's a hot ticket. Oh, that's funny. Okay, Mrs. Holt, does that absolutely represent your comment? And there she goes, folks, she's saying yes. Okay. That's absolutely awesome.
Let the record state. I hope you got all that, Jack.
Well, you know what? We have the video, so everybody's going to see it. Thanks, this has been very entertaining. It's almost not like zoning. Well, thank you, Mrs. Holt, for providing us with, what is the word? Comedic relief, we needed it. Is there anyone else who, you know, wants to speak in favor? I don't know how they're going to top that, but is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor? No go, huh, Kate?
Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who has any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application?
I see a holdover hand from Ms. Holt, but other than that, I do not see anything in the participants.
Thank you. Then what I'm going to do is close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Just, and in this meeting, where Mr. Knakis removed himself due to a conflict of interest in case number three, he will be participating in the conversation in the public meeting on this case and the last case. Mr. Knakis, since we just mentioned you and you've been fairly quiet, what are your comments?
So I'm in support of this application. I think it's a good use of the land. It's reducing the current non-conforming use by two buildings. And it seems to have the support of the neighbors. And it looks like it will be an improvement to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm in support. I think it's for the reasons Mr. Knakis just noted. It's definitely a much less intensive use of the property and will be a net improvement for the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lionell?
I'm also in favor, for the reasons my colleagues have just stated.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara?
Yeah, I agree. I'm also in favor of the application for the reasons stated.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carrier?
I'd like to note, it seems that maybe the bugs came out or something. I see Mr. Mankara is now inside. But beyond that, I'm in support of the application. I think that, you know, the written application is received, stands on its own merit. I mean, the oral testimony kind of confirms that. I also wanted to throw out that before Mr. Becker, you know, spoke about the architectural format trying to meet the area, that's what I saw when I first read the application without those words. I said, you know, that, that kind of barnish building fits into that area, which, which I go by all the time. And so, yeah, I'm in support of it. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm in support of the application. And I also am, you know, really like the fact that there's a residential unit on the second floor.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Ms. Boras let me know that she was in favor of the application. And I assume, Estafia, you're still having your audio issues? Okay. And I too am in favor of the application and happy to see that Mr. Mankara is now bug free too. I mean, though, it was nice seeing you sitting outside. It was like, it was, it was a nice view, okay, nice outside weather. Okay, then, I would like to ask if someone would like to entertain a motion. Mr. Lionell, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, BNA Construction LLC. Applicants are Joshua and Caleb Becker, 32 Groton Road, Sheet D, Lot 265. Requesting use variance from land use code sections 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 90, to remove three non-conforming structures and construct a new barn slash workshop slash office for a carpentry shop with an accessory residential unit on a second floor. This is in the R40 Zone Ward five. The board believes that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions to property, it's been used for a landscaping business for many years. And the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant pursue other than the use variance. The board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, that it is not contrary to public interest, and that substantial justice could be served. So I make a motion to approve the use variance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lionell. And thank you, Mr. Shaw, for seconding that motion. And I will now take the roll. Mr. Lionell, how do you vote, sir?
Vote in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And Mary Ellen McKay, and I vote in favor. That is 5-2-0. Congratulations, Joshua and Caleb and Mrs. Holt. You have been granted your variance. As we've been saying all night, there's 30 days window of appeal. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, please bring them to Mr. Falk. And Mrs. Holt, if you have any other kind of wonderful comments, Mr. Falk would love to hear them.
In the board. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. And we will now move on to case number five. Okay, and I will read that into the record. Safeland Corporation is the owner, 711 Incorporated, the applicant, 367 Amherst Street, Sheet G, Lot 652, requesting the following variances. One, from land use code section 190-108C1, to exceed maximum wall sign area, 90 square feet permitted, 122.3 square feet proposed. And two, from land use code section 190-108E2, to exceed maximum number of wall signs, three permitted, four proposed, to remove and replace signage at existing convenience store slash gas station. It's in the GB Zone Ward two. Is there somebody here to present case number four?
Yes, hello, this is Eric Todd of CNS Signs.
Okay, Mr. Todd, you have the floor. If you would please give us your name and address. And if you are alone and you have the floor to present your case.
Thank you. My office is there at 59 Sergeant Road, Manchester, New Hampshire. I'm the sign installer, just representing the case today. This is a 711 location, which currently has the existing signage pictured. This signage, I believe, had a variance before for its current size. And all we're doing is changing out the, the branding. So the branding refresh at this location. The signage is being updated, but the square footage that is there is what we're applying to maintain. This is not actually going to add any size to what's already there. So from the public's perspective, it'll just be nice new signage.
Okay. Kate, can you? I don't know if, Todd, also, could you let us know if you're there by yourself? If anybody is with you?
Oh, I am alone right now.
Okay, fine. We just need that to cover the runt to know. Is there anything else that you have to say on this before I ask the board if they have questions of you?
Um, it looks fairly straightforward. But if you, you know, scroll through the pictures in the, the package, you'll see the existing versus the changes. Just showing that it's basically a change of the graphics and not of the size or, or square footage that's there.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Kate. That was, that was a help. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Todd? Mr. Carrier?
Yeah, I was just wondering, maybe I, I missed it. I was doing a couple of things on the previous minutes there. But could he, could miss, could the applicant just run through what the four wall signs are? For me, I appreciate it.
Mr. Todd?
So it's a, it's a sign package for the gas station that includes the, the pylon sign and the, the wall signage that's there. And that's, it's a wrap that goes around the building.
Okay, so I, I guess, and is there 90, what is the square footage now?
Uh, it's the 112.3 square feet.
Okay, so we have 112, there's 90 permitted, but 112 currently, and 122 proposed, 122.3?
Mr. Todd, are you proposing 112.3 or 122.3?
I have to, I wasn't the person who filed the application, so my apologies. I'm just verifying off of that. It, it is the, the application is for 22.3 of additional. I believe that's additional to what the
I got it.
permitted use would be. But at this location, there was a variance, I'm assuming filed for the existing signage that's there.
Okay, I'm gonna be
revariating it.
Mr. Todd, I think I understand. You wanted to increase by 22.3, which comes up to 112.3. We're looking at 122.3. And I think either somebody did math a little bit incorrectly, or they put, they just juxtaposed the numbers somehow. But I understand, I think, what has happened. Mr. Falk, is that basically what happened? Somebody just added wrong or wrote it down wrong?
Um, give me a minute, I'll, I'll try to work it all out with everybody. So the existing sign in the front is 85.3 square feet. The four signs on the canopy are nine square feet each. So that's, three of them, that's 27. So that's 112 square feet. So 112 square feet are proposed. The building front is 60 feet, so 60 times one and a half, so 90 square feet of signage is proposed. They are actually, you know, the 22 point, whatever, square feet over, because 112 square feet is proposed, and 90 square feet would be allowed.
Okay, so the number written on our document was just
It may, maybe a typo. It should be, maybe it should be 112, 112.3, instead of 122. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. I just wanted to clear that up, because Mr. Carrier pointed that out. So we wanted to clear that up.
Yeah. Also, the square footage of the existing, the pylon sign, the road sign, the existing there is 119 square feet total. With the proposed, it's going to drop to 115. So there's some savings there as well.
Okay, if I could, if, if you can hear me, this is Mr. Carrier again. I guess this, directing the question to Mr. Falk. If you could just clarify on the, I know this site's been there a long time. What is the existing sign, square footage on the current site, Mr. Falk?
I'm not sure if I have that number, Mr. Carrier. I know what they're doing is they're trying to switch out all the existing signs for new ones. I thought they're all going to be the same size as existing. Mr. Todd, if you can confirm that?
This is one smaller.
Yes, that is my understanding, that the signage is being replaced with the same size, other than I guess the pylon is going to shrink slightly. But because the signage that exists was already larger than what's permitted, we have to file another variance.
Okay, thank you.
Pylon sign doesn't come into play with the variance, because it's basically the same height. And it's just a few square feet smaller.
Yes. Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Todd? I don't see any, Kate. Do you have any?
Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. Then I'm going to ask if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak in favor of this application. Kate, do you see anything?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then I will ask if there's anyone here who wishes to speak with questions or concerns or in opposition to this application.
Madam Chair, I see no hands, and I have received no phone calls or correspondence.
Thank you very much. Then seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw?
I'm, I'm in favor of the application. It, you know, there's, there's
It's, you know, there's, as we've been discussing, no change in the area. It's really just, again, refreshing the sign, so there'll be no impact from a small area perspective. So I think this is perfectly fine and reasonable and acceptable.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis?
I agree with Mr. Shaw. It's really more of makeover on the sign, just upgrading what's existing. So I'm in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara?
I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in favor of the application.
And Ms. Boras is also in favor of the application. And Mary Ellen McKay is also in favor of the application. Is there somebody here who would like to make a motion? Mr. Boucher?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Southland Corporation, owner of 7-Eleven Incorporated, 367 Amherst Street, sheet G, lot 652, requesting the following variances. Land use code section 190-108, section C subsection 1, to exceed maximum wall sign area, 90 square feet permitted, and this to 112.3 square feet proposed. And two, from land use code section 190-108, section E subsection 2, exceed maximum number of wall signs, three permitted, four proposed, remove and replace signage in an existing convenience store, gas station, it's in the GB zone, Ward two. We find that the variance needs to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant, cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than variance. This is just simply a, again, taking down the old signage and replacing with brand new signage, not increasing any square footage. It's a... Is this a business or a location that's been in existence? This has been in existence for quite some time now. So again, it's just replace the signage that was approved by variance some years back. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be done. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. And thank you, Mr. Shaw, for seconding that motion. Okay, I will now call the roll. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And Mary Ellen McKay votes in... That's five zero. That's a unanimous vote. Mr. Todd, the variance has been approved. Congratulations. As we've said all evening, there is a 30-day window of... Comments or questions or concerns, please bring them to Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier. And thank you for coming tonight and presenting your case to our board.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. Mr. Courier, yes, sir?
Yeah, I'd just like to say a note to Ms. Poirier that on page five of six of the voting sheets, there's one of the conundrums like we had last week. And I just wanted to get that on the record. So this variance is recorded one line below where it should be because I can't type in the existing one. It probably doesn't make sense to anyone else, but I think Ms. Poirier will know there've been a few glitches with these electronic voting sheets and I just wanted to get that out there on the recording. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me know, Jack. I will have that fixed tomorrow. I've been doing these by hand remotely, actually. The computer at City Hall is the one that I'm using, so I'm essentially possessing that one with my computer. So I appreciate your patience.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. And now we have a motion for rehearing request in front of the board. And so I'm going to read that into the record. A rehearing request from 4/28/20 public hearing. Daniel L. and Jane S. Richardson, revocable trust owners, 70 Berkeley Street, sheet 48, lot 61, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-31. One, to encroach up to five feet into the six-foot required side yard setback, western property line. And two, to encroach up to five feet into the six-foot required side yard setback, northern property line. Both requests to replace a non-conforming 12-by-20 detached garage on a corner lot with 24-by-24 detached two-car garage with storage above. It's in the RA zone, Ward three. The board denied variance one and approved variance two. This request is only for the denied variance one. I'm going to read the points and then I'm going to ask each member, and this would be the... Well, not... Carter, I would ask all the members, including the alternates, or just the voting members?
Well, only the voting members will be voting on the rehearing request, but they can still provide comments about these four points of law.
Okay, I just wanted to make that statement. Okay, so point number one, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. In reading the documentation and in understanding, we understand or acknowledge that there was a procedural error, that when we had the motion, the first motion to approve, and it failed immediately thereafter, there should have been a second motion to deny because the first motion did not pass. And so I would ask the board for their comments on that. Mr. Mancara?
I don't see that a second motion was necessary. This motion failed. There didn't need to be a second motion in, you know, the negative.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're going to get this correct. So you're saying we didn't need a motion to clarify?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay.
Yeah, his screen is frozen.
He was muted. I unmuted.
He's still muted.
No, he's muted again. No, he's unmuted.
There he goes.
You're for... Yeah.
All right, not sure if you can hear me, but I don't see why a second motion would be necessary. The first, the motion to approve failed, that was that. So I didn't see that as a procedural error, maybe I'm wrong.
Okay, fine. Mr. Knakis?
I think I agree with Mr. Mancara. And even if a second motion were to be required there, it seems like kind of a harmless error, whereas if the motion wasn't approved, really the only other avenue for it to go down is to be denied there.
Okay. And I'm wanting to make sure, and if you notice, I went to the two attorneys first. Mr. Courier?
I unmute myself. I thought the case was rested after the motion did not pass. I think it's extraneous. We could take another, you know, I mean, if they were too positive and too negative, I guess we could take a vote the other way, but I didn't think we had to do that. It could be an error. I'm open to hear what other opinion is, but I think the matter was adjudicated properly.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I thought that we, by not passing it, that we did sufficiently address that variance request.
Mr. Boucher?
I think there was a procedural error. This is my opinion. I was the one who made the motion. I was making a motion for a positive outcome and that didn't happen. So in my view, the motion, at this point, it's really incomplete in my mind because there wasn't a positive or it wasn't a, I don't know if I'm using the right word, there wasn't a motion in majority made for the specific outcome. So I don't know if I'm making myself clear. I know it's a little complicated, but I understand what the others are saying. I think this has come up before we've had discussion, but I do remember, I think in the past, it's kind of not, kind of doesn't happen this way where somebody makes a motion that, you know, we think is going to fail. I think, speaking to that, I had the impression, and Mr. Courier can correct me, but I think that in an earlier case tonight where I think Mr. Courier thought he was in the, not in the, not in the, I don't know, in the, doesn't think the motion was going to carry, I think that he was going to make that motion, didn't carry. I think that he was going to suggest, and I was going to suggest, that another motion be made for people not in favor of the motion, you know, to make that motion so that carries that way. So if I'm making myself clear, and it's getting a little late, I've been up since 3 o'clock this morning, I guess what I'm saying is that I think that a motion should have been made by the majority of the folks that were going to deny that motion. Yes, I probably, I agree that maybe the outcome would still be the same, but I think that in the end, I think that should have been done. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Lionel?
I don't think there was any procedural error. I haven't seen anything in the rules and regulations to say that you have to come up with a motion that passes. The rules are very clear that, you know, a motion either passes or fails and it has to pass with at least three members voting in favor to, for a variance. In the two and a half years or so I've been on the board, we've never taken a second motion just because we, a motion failed. We've, a motion fails, it fails and they don't get the, they don't get the variance. And that's the way we've done it. Mary Ellen, are you saying that you have advice from the city attorneys otherwise?
No, I don't have advice from the city attorneys. I just know that, you know, in my previous incarnation, we would have a motion, if the motion failed, you automatically got up and made a different motion. And so, you know, when, I've not seen us do this, but at the board. However, when I read that, I remembered, oh yeah, if we had a motion, you know, to pass and it didn't pass, then we automatically stood up and made another motion in the opposite direction. And so there's that haziness about it, the gray area for me, which is why I reached out instinctively to both Jay and Nick, because I wondered if maybe, you know, within the confines of the law, is there something that, you know, we may or may not be missing? And do we err on the side of caution? And do we talk to the attorney? I don't know. And I did see your hand just go up, Mr. Shaw.
Well, I'm not quite done.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lionel. I apologize.
I'm not quite done. It is my experience that when we have an appeal of this nature, the attorneys for the applicant make all sorts of interesting claims, many of which are not necessarily substantiated in the laws. And I, you know, in my study of all of the regulations for how we do our business, I've never seen anything that says, well, if the motion fails, you have to then turn around and make another motion that passes. Now, it's possible some boards have made it a policy to do that, but there's no, I'm not aware of any requirement for us to do so. And the decision was clear and made properly. Okay, now I'm done.
Thanks, Mr. Lionel. Mr. Shaw and then Mr. Courier?
So, and I think the case where that is definitely appropriate and reasonable and expected would be if we started with a motion of denial that failed, then it would be certainly incumbent upon the board to then consider a motion for approval. So I can definitely see where we might go down that path where there's thought that a motion will not have, you know, a request will not have sufficient support. So we would want to make sure we covered things through a motion that covered approval. I think in the case of where the approval is what's pursued first and that does not succeed, there is no need or requirement for the reverse. I think this board has had the practice on and off over my very long tenure to sometimes have considered this and just go through it as formality, but I'm not sure there's really was ever any real need for that. I think it can, you know, kind of remove any uncertainty, but clearly I think when all that is required, as I think Mr. Lionel noted, is three members to vote in the affirmative for an approval motion. That's all that has to be dealt with. And if that threshold is not met, then the variance is not approved.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Courier?
Yeah, I mean, my, the training we have, as Mr. Lionel mentions, is you need three or more affirmative votes and that's it. End of story. I think in my tenure on the board, there was some times where, in my recollection, when there were less than five members voting, four or three, there was, I think, some members at some time who felt that we had to take that extra step. I never felt that way. I don't know if we ever got professional opinion one way or the other, but my recollection, it was when it was certainly less than five voting members, but typically they're five, the hope is five, with three affirmative and it's, you know, you get three or you don't. And so in that regard, we had five voting members. I think there's not a procedural error here. I'm just kind of putting a little more maybe historical view from memory onto the table.
Thank you. And the conversation is great because we need to have it. Mr. Falk, is there anything you'd like to say to weigh in on this?
Well, I've thought about this from a lot of different directions and I kind of agree with Mr. Shaw, Mr. Courier, Mr. Lionel, Jay. I think everybody, I know Mr. Boucher thought a little differently, but a motion was made to support this. It was seconded, but there was no third vote, meaning automatically the motion's denied, fails. So if you look at it from that perspective, it's over. The decision's been made. The vote has been made to, the decision was made not to approve it, which I believe means that it's denied. And the other variance was approved on the other setback. So, I mean, even, I don't know if there'd be any other outcome. The other, only outcome would be the exact same thing, which would be a denial. I mean, I think at this point, you know, if the board wants to consider taking a vote... wants to consider taking a vote on number one, if there's a procedural error, it may be a four-to-one vote. I mean, one of these points, one of these four points in the rehearing request has to be approved. But I think if the board goes to a motion on this, I don't think it would be successful.
And I think I can concur with what everybody has been saying. We've never done that, and as I recall, in the trainings that we have had, all we have been told is you need to have three affirmative votes, and generally, that meant. But the question was raised, and so, it needed to be explored, it needed to be asked, and people's opinions needed to be spoken and heard, and so they were. And so, now, I will ask each of the regular members, how you feel on point number one. Was there a procedural error? Mr. Carrier?
No. Mr. Carrier votes, no, there was not a procedural error.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes, no procedural error.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes, no procedural error.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes, yes, even though it was minor. Mr. Boucher votes, yes.
Thank you. And myself, I could vote yes or no. And in this instance, and knowing where I am getting my feelings from, which has a much higher bar, I think I will, in this instance, say, no, there was no procedural error. Number two, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for this special exception and/or variance? Is there anyone who has a discussion on this? Do you want me to, should we go the way we did before? I want everybody's opinion. So, Mr. Mincara, do you feel there was an illegal decision?
No, I do not.
Okay. Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Carrier?
No, Mr. Carrier, I don't think there was an illegal decision.
Mr. Knakis?
I do not believe there was an illegal decision.
Ms. Boras?
Mr. Lionel, too.
And Mr. Lionel?
No, it was not an illegal decision.
Okay, fine. So, there's no comments, no questions. Regular board members, Mr. Lionel votes, no. Mr. Carrier voted, no. Mr. Shaw voted, no. Mr. Boucher voted, no. And Mary Ellen McKay voted, no. And who am I forgetting? One, two, three. No, I think I got, I got Mr. Carrier.
That was five. You got everybody.
I'm second guessing myself here. I just want to make sure. Number three, does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? I'm going to go with our regular members first. Mr. Lionel?
There was nothing relevant.
Mr. Carrier?
Sorry, just unmuting myself. I find no new information. I just wanted to speak on one point. There was, you know, a discussion in the rehearing request about view. Perhaps it could fall under this question, but at some point in our deliberations on this, about the view, I took the abutter's testimony on view as not just like a view shed, as, you know, like you look out your window, or you need to expect to see some, you know, nice uninterrupted view, but of, you know, a larger, larger structure, very close, you know, to the property line, and not maybe like a view shed looking out. So, I just wanted to put that out, that that's the way I saw the abutter's testimony, and as such, I see there's no new information.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No, and I appreciate Mr. Carrier's comments, and I pretty much concur with those.
Thank you. And myself, no. Mr. Knakis?
I don't see any material new information.
Mr. Mincara?
No, I don't see any new information.
And Ms. Boras also does not see any new information. Number four, is there anything which would cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Lionel?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Carrier?
No, for Mr. Carrier, and while I have the microphone on, I guess a point to the board, or maybe to Ms. Porter, perhaps on the voting sheets, we might want to expand the rehearing portion for the four questions, because I know Ms. McKay is busy capturing those. I'm doing them also here, but just a thought we could discuss offline is continuous improvement.
I have been meaning to discuss with somebody about remaking those forms to be a little bit more usable.
User-friendly?
Yeah, yeah, they're holdovers from probably years or decades past, so I'd welcome any feedback.
Thank you.
We can get those retyped.
For my
I have a few ideas.
And back to our discussion, our vote. Myself, I do not see anything that would cause the board to make a different decision. Mr. Mincara?
I would also agree. I don't think there's any information that would cause the board to make a different decision. I think the only thing I would just kind of add is that my recall was, there did seem to be some confusion, the views and which views were impacted, but I still don't think there was any information that would cause the board to make a different decision.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis?
I don't see anything that would cause me to make a different decision in this.
And Ms. Boras agrees with the board. In that case, seeing as we have said we don't see any changes to either points one, two, three, or four, is there someone who would like to make a motion, or would, should, would it be okay if I made that motion? Okay. Then, I would like to make a motion to deny the rehearing request based on point one, the board finds there was no procedural error. Point two, was it an illegal decision? The board is unanimous again, and finds no, is the answer to that decision, that question. Point number three, does the board, does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Again, the board is unanimous in its response, no. Point four, is there anything which would cause the board to make a different decision? And again, the board unanimously voted, no. And having voted in the way they have, I make the motion to deny the rehearing request. And Mr. Lionel, thank you, seconds that motion, and I will now call the roll. Mr. Lionel?
I'm in favor of denial.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
I am too in favor of the denial of the rehearing request.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor of the denial.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the denial.
And Mary Ellen McKay also votes in favor of the denial. That vote is unanimous. It's five to zero in favor of denying the rehearing request. Okay, so now, we will move on to the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes of April 28th? And let's handle April 28th first. We'll do them separately. Is that okay? Mr. Carrier, does that work for you? Thank you. Good thing you're muted.
Yes, of course.
We're all being Kate tonight. That's just great. Okay. Does, did anybody see any edits, corrections, additions, additions to the minutes of April 28th? I hear nothing, so I'm assuming there's, there's, no, everyone's read them? If that's the case, could we entertain a motion on acceptance of the minutes of April 28th, 2020?
So, move.
Mr. Shaw makes that motion. Is there a second? Mr. Lionel, thank you very much. I will now call the roll. Mr. Lionel?
In favor.
Mr. Carrier?
In favor of the approval of the April 28th minutes, no corrections.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And Mary Ellen votes, Mary Ellen McKay votes in favor. The minutes of April 28th are approved as written unanimously. Okay, the minutes on May 26th, does any, oh, Mr. Falk, yes, sir?
Madam Chair, I spoke with Mr. Carrier earlier, and my connection to that meeting was not very good, and I couldn't hear a lot of the testimony. That's why in a lot of, a lot of places in the minutes, I wrote poor connection or very poor connection. I just couldn't hear anything, so I couldn't write what I didn't hear. That's why that is there. I can see if I can try to get a tape from the public TV department, and see if I can fill in some of those gaps, if that's possible. I'll just, I'd offer that.
Okay, and so then, we're gonna, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Carrier, but then we're gonna, as a board, determine, are we going to, how we're going to handle these minutes. Mr. Carrier?
Well, just in the discussion with Mr. Falk, on my end, and I believe on everybody's computer, except Mr. Falk, we heard the folks' testimony. It was strictly Mr. Falk, and I'd like to point out that Mr. Falk is in a different location, and we've, I've heard him loud and clear tonight, so at least that's a problem solved there. And if, but I don't, perhaps because he's the curator of the tape, the tape got garbled also. That's what we don't quite know, but I just wanted to say, Mr. Falk's going to take a stab at seeing if that information is there, because I certain, I don't think any of us remember, you know, that, any of that, you know, little discussion where it says it was hard to hear.
Mr. Falk?
At that meeting, I was in my office at City Hall, and apparently, other groups and boards have been having some connectivity issues with low bandwidth, and I think Kate had some of it that night as well. So, it wasn't great. I'm at my home, I'm in my kitchen right now, and I hear everything perfectly, so I'll have to do them from home from now on until that issue is resolved at City Hall. But I've heard and seen everything tonight perfectly, so I'm hoping that was just that one meeting.
Ms. Boras?
I can concur that he was having extreme issues with the connection. At one point, I actually had to take the host role, because he was not coming through at all.
I remember that. I think he was even trying to switch computers at some point, trying to really adjust what was happening for him. And it's happened, I think, to every one of us. We have, you know, connection issues. So, having said all this, what is the board's pleasure on the minutes? Would we like to accept them as they are? Would we like to not accept them? Would we like to see if something can be done to add into it? What is the pleasure of the board? Mr. Lionel?
I would like to ask Mr. Falk if he could, see if he could get a more complete tape to fill in the gaps, because this is, the written transcript is really the definitive public record. And I think that it's, you know, we should try to avoid having 18-minute gaps
Wait.
in the record.
I'll see what I can do. I can't promise anything, because it's not up to me, but I'll see what I can do.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was just thinking back in history to gaps and tapes.
Watergate.
It's probably, yeah, it's probably too, too long ago for at least Nick and Kate, maybe.
History book at one point in my life.
I remember those days very vividly.
Mr. Carrier?
Well, it would be my humble suggestion, we just table those minutes to the next meeting to see if any of the gaps can be filled.
I think that's a, you know, an awesome suggestion. And, you know, you're right, these are the records, Mr. Lionel, and somehow, I think, this is the legal documentation that goes into a court, and, you know, seeing gaps, very poor connection, I don't think that would quite work. So, if we can, you know, Mr. Falk, if you could see what can be done, if it can be done, fine, and we fix it, but if it can't, then, you know, the board is faced with another or a different decision. So, then, I would like to table these minutes to a date certain, or to, do we want to go to the, how about we go two meetings, or do you want to
Two meetings.
Two meetings.
Which would be the July 14th.
The July 14th meeting. We'll table these two then. I think I need to take a vote on that? Is that, my motion is to table, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Lionel. You've been saving me all night here. Okay, I will now
That could be quicker on the draw.
Now you're making me think of a cartoonist, I Quick Draw McGraw.
Baba Louie.
Oh, my word. I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
And Mary Ellen McKay also votes in favor. Thank you very much. Let me see. We have an agenda for the next meeting. Oh, no, we don't. No, we don't.
Let me put that up on the board.
We have two cases, actually. We have a little bit of a lighter meeting. We have two cases, actually. We have a little bit of a lighter meeting.
We won't know how to act.
I'm not going to say it should be a quick one either.
Don't you dare.
He's been jinxing us this whole time. He'll say it's an easy case, and it turns out to be an hour long.
Web and Kate.
I'm not going to say anything.
Break out the sage, Kate.
My apologies. That was a little salty.
I'm sorry. Um, these are the two cases. Do, so do we see any regional impact?
No.
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 I'm hearing, do I have to roll call this?
We never did before for these.
Okay, well, then, no, I just, no regional impact. But when we put it down on the sheet, we do, never mind. It's late.
Put down unanimous.
Yes, Mr. Courier?
Well, you know, typically, we don't take a roll call, but we're in the room and we're all seeing information of, you know, our heads, and it's recorded as unanimous. I'm, I'm not able to see everybody's picture on this screen, but I'm hearing from you, Ms. McKay, that it's unanimous, that there's no regional impact, so that's what I'll put down.
Yes, I can see all the nodding, and I see everyone's face. So, there is no regional impact. If anyone's uncomfortable with the, you know, us putting it that way, please let me know, and I'll take a roll call vote. Nope, I see nothing, crickets. So, we're good. Okay, I think, having no further business to come before the board, I would entertain a, for crying out loud, I gotta do a roll call. I will entertain a motion with, Mr. Shaw.
We'll move to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Mr. Courier? Okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Lionel, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mary Ellen McKay also votes, yes. So, we are adjourned at 9:52.